Would you please rise for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Seeliger.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on May 15, 2017 were distributed to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, received from Finance Director Brian Bishong as a listing of budget transfers to be made this month, and those were distributed to you prior to the meeting for your approval.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfer?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special recognitions this evening? Thank you. So we move on to lobby visitation. At this point, we welcome anyone that's interested in addressing council on any agenda items to do so. Kay, do we have anybody that's signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, we have Barbara Keller.
Barbara Keller. Right. Would you please begin by approaching the microphone and clearly state in your name and address for the record?
My name is Dr. Barbara Keller. I am a resident of 971 Deer Ridge Run in Bowling Green. My comments were prompted by some of the discussion from your last council meeting. We have a series of fortuitous events occurring in the community right now that really prompted my thinking about communication. You were talking about the senior center being repositioned over on South Grove, and it occurs to me that the city schools are also considering doing some things with their buildings and consolidation or whatever. And I would propose that we begin to think about some more economical options for seniors. I'm a senior, and I don't think I need a new building, but I also am a member of this community and believe that our city schools are a big draw for people coming to this community. Having a new senior center isn't going to be a draw for people moving into Bowling Green, but the kinds of schools we have would certainly play a part in moving to this community. And it is my thinking that perhaps we should look at repurposing some of the city schools once the decision is made to move forward with whatever building option there is. A senior center located in a place like Kenwood, I was a teaching assistant, I'm retired, but I was a teaching assistant at Kenwood. It's handicapped accessible. There's a cafeteria. There's a library. There's a gymnasium. There's a stage, and there are upwards of 24 rooms that could be used for a variety of purposes. I also think another consideration, but I don't want to focus on this, I'm really more concerned about repurposing Kenwood for, or whatever school, for the senior center. But another option, as we think about the city administration, a place like Conneat, near the parks, it's accessible, good parking, and one of the advantages of looking at repurposing an elementary school is there's a lot of good space that can be repurposed for a variety of reasons. And I think that also includes the city administration considering utilizing one of the buildings. In other words, repurposing for that purpose, too. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Keller. Kay, is that the only one that we had on the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else that might want to address council? Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on our agenda, we move into official reports to be led off by Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of council and all assembled, over the weekend, we received several reports, primarily from residents on the east side about the deplorable conditions and appearance of the house at 1014 East Worcester. These continuing reports about that address are enormously frustrating. When I say continuing reports, it goes on for two pages. I've got them here. In any event, it's enough to make your head spin. These reports are enormously frustrating, and a number of attempts have been made to call out the owner and the occupants of the property. It is unfortunate that conditions like this exist, and there is so little disregard for community values and people who reside in the neighborhood. It is an old story, unfortunately, and we know that we continue to have some properties in the city where the same argument can be made, and we all can identify. Some come immediately to mind. Please be assured that every effort will be made to correct the situation. And in this regard, I don't want to dwell on this, but I've made several trips to the properties over the weekend. We've had a number of photos taken, and I really want to thank Rose Hess and others on the east side for constantly monitoring the situation over there and trying to heighten public awareness. And unfortunately, it's not all kinds of properties. There are just some. And this one over there, that's so bothersome, especially for so many visitors coming into the university right now this summer. And invariably, I know, I haven't, I go over to the orientation sessions, and I know that people are going to be saying, I know the president of the university will say, can't we do something about that place? You can fill in the blanks. But, so I just want to tell you that, you know, Lori and Joe and others are looking into the situation with the help of the city police, and I think it's time to take off the gloves with that property. We have tried everything with the owner of that particular property in Holland, Ohio. We have tried to be nice. We've gone, you know, of course, each fall, we've been going knocking on doors, and that's one. Somehow, the place is wired. They know when we're coming. All I have to do is look in the window and just say, oh, my gosh, it's hard to believe. But this last weekend, it was all spilling out, all over the front and so forth. And I don't think I'm exaggerating because we have enough photos to prove it. So let's hope we can maybe get someone's attention on this and/or figure out a way as a city council, as a city administration, to take charge of some of these things and not just let them keep going on and on and on and on. Despite our best efforts with code enforcement and the health department, it all takes so much time, but it just is very, very frustrating. Several residents have been in touch with me about the possibility of joining with mayors throughout the country in combating climate change and in preparing for global warming. The intensifying of the environmental movement among mayors is proceeding on a bipartisan basis in impartial response to some of the proclamations emanating in recent days from Washington. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to hear on NPR Mayor Jim Brainard of Carmel, Indiana, who has served this Indianapolis suburb for almost 30 years as mayor. Carmel, a city of 84,000, that has long been identified as one of the most livable mid-sized cities in the country. Mayor Brainard's comments about Carmel could well have been said about Bowling Green and our efforts to be on the leading edge of environmental sustainability. In summary, I will be investigating the possibility of joining with other mayors in the Climate Mayors National Movement, and I'm grateful to people that have brought this to my attention. I don't know Mayor Brainard personally, but we have family in Carmel. It's a city, it's the roundabout city of the United States with over 100 roundabouts. It's, I just marvel at the place. They have extraordinarily wealth, too, but they do things right, and whether on a small or large scale, and it's just been growing like mad. And I admire Mayor Brainard for his stand because he's been a national leader in the Mayor's Association, and I commend him for some of these bold steps and joining together with other mayors regardless, regardless of the political labels. So I know that you probably concur with me in this and hear me loud and clear. The Worcester Green Steering Committee met recently for the purpose of refining concept plans in preparation for a public viewing in the near future. We also adopted a logo designed by Amy Karlebeck with a curving banner with the words Worcester Green over a landscape scene depicting blue sky, a bank of clouds and trees that represent families, as well as an abstract walkway with the words A Gathering Place written beneath. And the sidewalk and Amy's logo is a W for Worcester there. So she's done an absolutely marvelous job in her logo, and I'm sorry, I don't have it tonight, but you've seen it in the Sentinel. And we will have, as we make some additional reports to you, it'll all present it to you. But the Steering Committee adopted that logo with great enthusiasm. And I have to tell you personally, and I know I could tell by some of the others there, she did such a masterful job of capturing the feeling, the importance of that 1.7 acres there. And I frankly got a little emotional with it because it was so touching, and I hope it's going to touch people not only here, but also where everyone's holding a pocketbook as we move down the road here. But it's a really, really neat concept. And just a reminder about the ribbon cutting ceremony for the aquatic, aquatic, I sound like Donald Duck there, I'll tell you. Aquatic splash pad this Wednesday at the water park beginning at 1:00 PM, and I know Kristen will probably tell you a little bit more about it. And then also, in the next week, we have the combined Flag Day and Elder Abuse Awareness Event at the senior center beginning at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, of course, June 14th, Flag Day. And so keep in mind, this Wednesday, the ribbon cutting there at the splash pad over at the community center, and then next week for the special, I think always very touching, we take about 10 minutes. If you have a chance to participate in it, if your schedule permits, I think you might enjoy it. And we just do it out here. It's a simple ceremony, but holds great value from a total community perspective. And lastly, I have placed before you the names of Sheila Brown for a three-year appointment to the Human Relations Commission as a replacement for Dr. Roger Grant. Roger just simply asked to beg off. He's had some personal things going right now, all very good. And so he said, just let me step back for a little bit. So I'm so grateful to Sheila for stepping in, and she's worked so closely with the Human Relations Commission. I think many of you know her family and what they do each and every year for our annual tribute to Martin Luther King Jr. in January. And also, I've asked, and he's enthusiastically accepted, that Will Earhart be considered for a six-year term on the Planning Commission as a replacement for the term-limited Brady Gaskins, and that's from, Brady lives in the west side, and that's where Will lives as well. Some of you might remember Will when he came before you asking for consideration for appointment as being a member of council. And he was just such an impressive young person, a true millennial. He does have family, but he's a well-respected attorney for that major international group down in Finley, Ohio, namely the Marathon Corporation of Finley. And he's also going to be, in addition to his law degree and other, you know, academic accomplishments, he's going to be at the urging of his company to pursue an MBA at Bowling Green State University. So I think that speaks well of our MBA program here and the relationship with that corporation. So, Mr. President, members of council, this concludes my report unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Other questions for Mayor Edwards?
Mr. President, I don't have questions, but you got a little emotional when you saw the banner for the green space and, or the common. And I have to tell you, I'm a little emotional tonight here that you're going to be joining or considering joining the mayors.
Thank you.
This is a huge, really speaks. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you very much.
I was also called and contacted by a lot of people last week. I told them to object to you.
They did.
Who wanted you to join, and this is a great statement for our community. So thank you so very, very much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the commission appointments as presented by Mayor Edwards?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The commission appointments are approved as presented. Thank you. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. Included in your legislation for this evening is a proposal for the establishment of Community Reinvestment Area Number Six, which would be located in the proposed expansion to Woodbridge Business Park. Councilmember Jeffers asked that I explain that a little bit more and some of the advantages for the city, and so I'm going to take a moment to do so. According to the state, a community reinvestment area program is an economic development tool that provides real property tax exemptions for property owners who renovate existing or construct new buildings. This piece of legislation establishes an area where such agreements can be offered. Any specific agreements, though, do come back before council for your subsequent approval. There are numerous benefits to establishing designated community reinvestment areas and considering these agreements that may come before you in the future. Among them are solid, stable employers in our community who provide jobs for our citizens and contribute to the fabric of our community. These companies and their employees are valued community members who, it should be noted, do pay income tax. Before a CRA agreement is approved, the city schools have an opportunity to meet with the company and negotiate an agreement for compensation for the time when the property taxes are abated. And since we've started working with these post-1994 CRAs, this process has been beneficial to our schools. Also, keep in mind that once a building and a company is in town and its abatement period is finished, the property taxes are paid, which elevates all areas impacted by property taxes. The current Woodbridge Business Park is in a CRA, and the businesses that receive incentives to locate here many years ago contribute significantly and importantly to our economic health. Lastly, I point out to you that this process is used by many communities, and we are often in competition with other locations for where companies want to invest their money. Additionally, to qualify for state economic development incentives, it is usually required that the city offer an incentive as well. CRA agreements are one of the less costly ones to the city budget. It is important that Bowling Green remains competitive in its economic development efforts. And that completes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Lori?
Mr. President, Lori, I was under the impression there needed to be some sort of blighted area in or near the CRA zone. Is that correct?
If you look at the map attached to your legislation, you know, it is a wide area where we establish it, and so I think there are areas in there that meet the definition of blight.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Other questions for Heather?
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ali.
Good evening. I will be brief, but it is summer at Parks and Rec, no matter what the calendar says. Summer has started. Tomorrow morning, bright and early, we will have a live remote at the pool with Mr. Clint Corp there, the morning show, not in the water, I don't think. That's the plan. So 6:00 to 9:00 AM, so we're looking forward to that. As the mayor indicated, we do have a ribbon cutting for the three splash pad creatures. They have been up and going since Memorial Day, getting lots of use. They're pretty cool. 1:00, and so you got flyers a while back. The one thing I will mention is, it's at 1:00, and yes, as true to form for chamber ribbon cutting, we will have refreshments from the pool concession stand. However, feel free to come early and have lunch. We will be having the Clara Combo, which is a hot dog, chips, and a drink for savings at $4.75, I believe. So, or whatever else you want to purchase from the concession stand. And so shameless plug that if you are in city park, you can, I want to remind you that you can come in and use the concession stand without paying to use the pool. So that is an option because there isn't an outer window. So make sure that if you're hungry or thirsty in the park or just driving by, you check that out. So everything is up and going, summer camps, events. We had our first lunch in the park, and this Sunday is the first concert in the park. And I will say that, most importantly, because it is the Bowling Green Area Community Band at 7:00. So most of Bowling Green will be there. Don't be left out. 7:00 Needle Hall Stage. And this Friday is, I believe, it does not say, but it is the Third Annual Art in the Park that we partner with the Bowling Green Arts Council. I'll pass those around for you. That is from 4:30 to 7:30 at Simpson Garden Park. So that is all that I have unless you have questions of me.
Other questions for Kristen?
Thank you very much. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just an update for June 8, at 4:00 to 6:00 PM, out of the Simpson Garden Park, we're going to have a public meeting to talk about the Conneat Avenue projects, which include the waterline project, which is wrapping up, the pump station, San Andreas Sewer Pump Station in Forest Main, and also the paving project that Public Works Engineering Division is going to be doing here yet this year, probably starting in July. So we sent a letter to residents in the affected area, letting them know that, you know, why the waterline project had to happen, letting them also know that the sewer project is going to happen hopefully later this year, and that the paving project is going to happen this year as well. So give them a quick chance to come out and then talk to engineering staff, water and sewer staff. We'll have some displays of the conditions of the waterline that was out there prior to us starting the project and what we put in, so they'll be able to see those examples. We'll have some information again about the sewer project and what's going to happen with that, hopefully later this year. So if you're out, if you're available, you're welcome to come out and tend and see what we have to offer. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Right. No, I appreciate having that forum, that public forum, because, you know, for members or people who live over there, that's been tough, and it's been a long time. And I appreciate all the efforts, and they've been very, very gracious about, or patient, I should say, with it, and I appreciate your communications.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
I've got a few updates on some projects. The Fairview Poe Traffic Signal is really all but done except for the street name signs that get hung up on the top there. Probably do that in the next few weeks. Also on Fairview, you may have seen some sidewalks going in. That's our crews taking those existing four-foot-wide sidewalks, making them five, trying to get the path where a lot of students and people walk down through there, getting those sidewalks kind of up out of the ground, making those better. Once we're done there, we're going to run up to North Main Newton and finish up that corridor right in front of Burger King, do the sidewalks there, and put four corners of the Newton Main intersection with ADA ramps, which includes the pedestrian push buttons and the protected left turns at North Main Newton. Scott emailed me about a month ago, and we had things in the works there to add protected left turn. So if you're on West Newton, for example, wanting to go north to Perrysburg, a lot of times you have to sit there and wait. And we're going to put a protected left turn in there to allow that movement, and same thing for East Newton, a left turn to go south back into town. So that work will be happening probably in June and July, try and get that done before school gets back in session. I'm sure the folks at Betco will appreciate that. Another project coming up, Shilla Company is the contractor for the Napoleon Road paving. That will be from South Main to South College. That project will start June 19 and last about a month. There'll be some milling, some sidewalk work, ADA ramps, and then repaving of that stretch of Napoleon Road. So that's by the Shilla Company. So other projects will be coming down the pike here. I'll keep you in the loop as they come online. That's my report. And if you have any questions of me.
Questions for Brian. Good luck. Busy season.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our official reports. We move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2018.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Jeffers.
I have several items here. First is a resolution implementing Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number Six in the city of Bowling Green and designating a housing officer to administer this program. I have an ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 60.102 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership Petitioners. An ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 43.03 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust Petitioner. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately .50 acres of land in plain township Wood County, Ohio from Sandra K. Miller Petitioner. The next three ordinances will require a public hearing. Well, I'll just read all three first. An ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Worcester Street as petitioned for by R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Poe Road as petitioned for by Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust. And ordinance establishing interim zoning of R2 single-family residential zoning for the property located at 16471 Grim Road and recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Sandra K. Miller. Just a quick comment on the interim zoning. These properties, the annexation public hearing takes place within the Planning Commission, so all these public hearings are for is the interim zoning.
Thank you, Bruce.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did not establish that date, then.
Why don't we go ahead and complete introduction of legislation, and we'll handle that when we go through the first reading.
All that.
Thank you. I have three pieces of legislation from the Public Utilities Committee. First an ordinance accepting a utility easement from Bowling Green Lodge, LLC. Also, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a real estate purchase agreement and complete the terms therein for the acquisition of a four-acre parcel of land located at 23134 Hall Prairie Road and declaring an emergency. And finally, an ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator and the Utilities Director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority and to request qualifications for engineering services and advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Just to recap the committee of the whole meeting that we had before tonight's regular council meeting, we met at 6:00 and talked about our continuing issues with the general fund, and we made progress. A couple of things I think we decided. One was just the final elimination of increasing the income tax as a solution to that problem. general fund. And we made progress. A couple of things I think we decided. One was just the final elimination of increasing the income tax as a solution to that problem for a lack of support that, that was, had tentatively been discarded the last meeting, but we gave it one more quick look this meeting and minds had not changed. So increasing the income tax is not going to be one of the options chosen eventually. We also tentatively agreed that of a range of options we were looking at in terms of the amount of money to be raised, that there seemed to be a decided majority sentiment to shoot for the lowest amount in that range, which is about $800,000. And we talked about the various merits of the three main options that are still on the table. Redistributing the income tax from the Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Fund of the general fund, a tree trimming assessment on people's property taxes, and a trash collection fee, charging people for the trash service that the city provides. Didn't really get a lot into the merits of privatizing trash collection versus the trash collection fee, but it seemed to me that the sentiment continued to strongly be in favor of charging a fee over privatizing trash collection. So I think at our next meeting, it will be pretty easy to conclude that if we go with the trash collection as one of the options, that it would probably be in terms of a fee. And in that regard, we need to meet on June 19th. Kay, can we meet at six o'clock again?
Yes.
Okay. Meet at six o'clock. The notion will have a limited period of time for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And then we will try to tentatively decide on a plan. Certainly in terms of the redistribution of income tax option, we do need to make a decision at that meeting on that option at a minimum, because we would need to pass legislation at our only remaining meeting that we have before we're looking at a ballot deadline to get on the November ballot. So we will, we will be making some decisions at the June 19th meeting.
Thank you, Bob. I think that, just very quickly commenting, I think that our discussions to date have been really very good, very informative, and certainly appreciate your leadership as we move through that process. I think that obviously next, next meeting will be important. So hopefully council people can, or council members can continue to question and research and be prepared to come to that meeting in a position to be decisive and make some decisions because it's an important issue.
Yeah. And this, I should mention, as Sandy mentioned at the end of the meeting for residents of town that have preferences among one option over another or what we should do, as opposed to speaking at a meeting, you have a better chance of being heard by emailing or contacting us. We've all got phone numbers and email addresses on the city's website. And there's nothing wrong from hearing from as many people as possible before that June 19th meeting.
Thanks, Bob. Are there additional council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. It's not really a council committee report, but at the last meeting, we discussed, we again discussed the Nexus Pipeline. And the last meeting was our first meeting after the forum with the geologist. And as our discussion at the last meeting unfolded, Daniel and I expressed interest and concern about what additional steps we can perhaps take. And we stated we were interested in looking into the concept of a motion to intervene with FERC. Daniel and I did wind up meeting with Dr. Akir. And it certainly strengthened my belief that there's merit to filing a motion to intervene. I know there's questions about it and questions of cost, et cetera. But I think the thing that struck me most when we spoke to Dr. Akir was that, you know, anytime you build a pipeline, there's going to be risks. But this is a pipeline that's, has a lot of risks that is not even acknowledged in the environmental impacts statement. So it seems that if there's usually inherent risk, it may be raised with, with this pipeline. So if that's correct and there's something catastrophic that happens down the road, doing a motion to intervene seems to give us a legal leg to stand on if something really does happen, something catastrophic. There's been multiple letters written to legislators and to FERC and Nexus in effect, expressing that. And perhaps that also expresses our concern in advance of a catastrophe. But my impression is that doing a motion to intervene would be a stronger statement and a stronger legal statement from, from, from council or from the administration. So we were, you know, asked to look into that. We had a good meeting with Dr. Akir. And I continue to feel like we should certainly explore that and, and submit the motion if at all possible. As I understand it, it would require a resolution from council, which would give it the strength of the legislative body. And along with the resolution, there is a document to basically announce that we're, you know, requesting the motion to intervene. The cost has been described to me as negligible by Dr. Akir. I believe Mr. Marsh has a different impression of the cost. And I guess I'd like to just ask, you know, what cost we can really expect or how cheaply this can perhaps be done. You know, a local group that's concerned about the pipeline has done a motion to intervene. I don't know what the cost of that was. And I don't know if, you know, if we can learn that. But I can't imagine that that was very expensive. I think one of the concerns is that if we take this legal step, are we on a slippery slope that ultimately leads us into greater litigation and expense? And my impression from Dr. Akir is, is it would not, that it could be a singular action that could express our, our concern. Daniel, jump in if you have anything to add. But I guess that's what I'd like to encourage is that we continue to look at that option. We're running out of time. FERC is without a quorum right now, but soon will be. Even in the best of times, FERC tends to pretty much rubber stamp these things. And we're not in the best of times. And the, if it's true that this is a higher risk than possible, than usual, I continue to feel like it's our obligation to take whatever realistic steps that we can.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I would just add that, you know, I want to thank the mayor and all members of council who weighed in on this. We've exchanged a few messages. But one of the more notable things about that meeting that we had with Dr. Akir was that he sees this, and you know, this is my understanding, so John, correct me if I misunderstood something, but I believe Dr. Akir said that further motion, further activity with FERC would be part and parcel of the kind of process that we've already started, chiefly with, with the mayor, in terms of doing our due diligence and setting a record of concern and questions that we've asked to determine, you know, the relative risks and dangers that might be posed by the pipeline. I echo what John said in terms of seeing a need for further action. I'll also affirm that I think that there is a real sense of urgency here because despite, despite the slow pace of nominees to federal boards coming out of Washington, we can't just assume that's going to continue. And so, you know, you know, it's my position that we can't put a price tag on our water supply here in Northwest Ohio. We know what Toledo went through. And while it wouldn't be the same exact issue, you know, I really think that our water system is one of our crown jewels. And so I don't want to see anything happen to it. And for me personally, that means, you know, we don't want to, you know, we don't want something that's costly prohibitive, but at the same time, if that's what's needed to protect the water, then I think it's worth it. So unfortunately, I don't see Dr. Akir here tonight, but I know that some of you had questions. And we would be happy to forward those to Dr. Akir. And outside of that, I think the only other thing I would say at this time is that I do think it would be good for us to have some kind of discussion as a council and with the mayor about how our panel discussion actually went. Because it seemed to me that at least one member of council who exchanged views on this subject with us had a very different interpretation of how that panel went than I do personally. Because, you know, what I've took from that panel discussion was, we had one member who said that the pipeline probably wasn't a threat. We had another Dr. Akir who said that it was. And then we had two who were sort of in the middle and they said, you know, this could be a problem if it's not implemented well. And what I take from that is that really those are also two votes in favor of it being a threat. Because the fact is, is that what we have to compare the Nexus Pipeline to, the Rover Pipeline, has been an utter disaster. It's not been implemented well. And so personally, I don't feel comfortable assuming that it, that Nexus's project would be implemented well. I don't think we have solid ground to expect that. So I am interested in us pursuing further action here. I'm also interested in making sure everybody's comfortable to the extent possible with what we do. But, you know, John and I for sure are continuing to explore what this all would mean for us so that whether we go in or not, we go in with our eyes open.
Thank you. We'll look forward to, you know, seeing what you develop in terms of resolution. I would encourage you to certainly stay in touch with Mr. Marsh because I think that his importance, or his, his opinions certainly are going to influence our final judgments or opinions on the matter. And obviously, keep in touch with Lori as the municipal administrator, as you know, you work on crafting the resolution. And I would suspect that if you do end up bringing a resolution, that we could have a healthy discussion on the merits of that as we go through the process of our normal legislative action, I'm assuming, or expedited, whatever. I mean, you, you end up proposing. So just again, my, my primary recommendation is to please keep in touch with Mr. Marsh because I think that his opinions are, are Dr. Akir great value.
For sure. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
If we could maybe clarify a little bit on that. So we're, we're, we heard the experts. We're trying to, each of us assess the risks. And then we're trying to assess the costs of trying to mitigate the risks. And I might like to hear from the mayor, Mr. Marsh on that, if you care to tonight. I mean, if we're talking six figures, then, you know, that's pretty significant. If it's, if it's a real serious risk, then maybe it's worth that. And then the third factor is what are our chances of prevailing with FERC by whatever methods we choose. And as you mentioned, many people have sent letters of inquiry. And so this motion to intervene, it sounds like it's more, more serious. You have to be, if this is going to be something we can use in an event of a catastrophe, then we have to show that we were really serious about this. And we show that we're really serious by spending a lot of money to intervene. I'll just leave it at that. That's how I understand the issue.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Thanks. We move on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3668 for first reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2018. Resolution number 3669 for first reading. Resolution implementing Sections 37.3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number Six in the city of Bowling Green, and designating a housing officer to administer this program. Ordinance number 8596 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation.
Excuse me, Kay.
Yes, sir.
Revering back to the legislative package that we received from the administration prior to this evening's meeting, it was my impression that on Resolution 3669, we were being asked to consider waiving rules and giving this an expedited reading in order to meet some final deadlines and to allow this process to move forward.
You're right. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, please. So is there, is there a motion to that effect?
It's moved.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3669.
Resolution number 3669 for second and third reading. Resolution implementing Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number Six in the city of Bowling Green, and designating a housing officer to administer this program.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did, did you say we want emergency clause?
It's a resolution. It just needs.
Okay. Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 3669.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3669 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8596 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 60.102 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership Petitioners. Ordinance number 8597 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 43.03 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust Petitioner. Ordinance number 8598 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 0.50 acres of land in plain township Wood County, Ohio from Sandra K. Miller Petitioner. Ordinance number 8599 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Wooster Street and petitioned for by R.J. Carpenter Family Limited Partnership.
We need to establish public hearing for this in the next two ordinances. And we need 28 days at least. So do you have a date for that?
I do. January, oh, January. Yeah. July 17th at 6:45 PM.
Good. Thank you.
Ordinance number 68600 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Poe Road as petitioned for by Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust. Ordinance number 8601 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of R2 single-family residential zoning for the property located at 16471 Brim Road and recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Sandra K. Miller. Ordinance number 8602 for first reading. Ordinance accepting a utility easement from Bowling Green Lodge LLC. Ordinance number 8603 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a real estate purchase agreement and complete the terms therein for the acquisition of a 4.0 acre parcel of land located at 23134 Hall Prairie Road and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8603 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8603.
Ordinance number 8603 for second and third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a real estate purchase agreement and complete the terms therein for the acquisition of a 4.0 acre parcel of land located at 23134 Hall Prairie Road and declaring an emergency.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8603.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8603. I also move to adopt ordinance 8603.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just comment that the reasoning for the expedited processing of this particular ordinance is to, in order to facilitate the completion of the acquisition.
ordinance is to, in order to facilitate the completion of the acquisition. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8603 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8604 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the Utilities Director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority and to request qualifications for engineering services and advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8589 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing an exchange of real estate with the First Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green and the subsequent donation of real estate to the Wood County Committee on Aging for the ultimate use as a new senior citizen center and related facilities. Ordinance number 8590 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 75.01 and creating and adopting Section 75.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding low speed, under speed, or utility vehicle or mini truck.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we amend Ordinance 8590 by substitution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8590 is amended by substitution. Can I ask Lori, as we move forward, given this is third reading at our next council meeting, I know that you did provide a little bit of clarification on why we're amending this, but could you clarify for that for us in a little greater detail in your legislative package that you present to us prior to that? Thank you.
Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3666 for third reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move to adopt Resolution 3666.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3667 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8585 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of miscellaneous equipment not needed for any municipal purpose.
President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt Ordinance 8585.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8585 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8587 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the leasing of municipally-owned property for agricultural purposes.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8587.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8587 is adopted. That completes the items on their agenda this evening. Are there any other matters to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?